All right. Let's see here, let a few more folks in. Awesome. All right, we'll give it another, you know, minute or so and we will, you know, get going. Really appreciate everybody jumping on, on time. This is Ray Ramirez, I'm the, the co-founder with Thrive HR Consulting and we're an HR consulting firm. And we're really happy, you know, to be presenting today and talk a little bit about, you know, are you transaction ready from a buy side? And we have David Lawler also on the call, gonna be helping me here, keeping me honest. David, you wanna introduce yourself? Ooh, we need you unmute.
There we go, David Lawler, longtime HR professional. I've been doing HR M&amp;A work for over 20 years now, both as a practitioner and consultant. And very excited about the opportunity to speak with you all today.
Yep, all right, so just a couple of quick, you know, notes for, for folks that are, that haven't muted themselves. If you could mute yourself, that'd be great. And that way, or I can mute you, either way. So we want to make sure that there's no distractions for the folks that are on, that are on the, on the session today. We, we will be recording the session so that we can make it available for other folks that weren't able to attend. You know, but again, my name is Ray Ramirez. And we're looking forward to talking to you a little bit about acquisitions. And how to be more ready for those as an organization and as an HR practitioner. So a couple of things, one of one is, this is a four-part series. So David and I are doing part one on the buy side, part three on the sell side. And then we also, we're also partnering with Alvarez and Marsall on compensation and benefits and things to be aware of in acquisitions. So, you know, so it's a four-part series, the good news is there's no charge, it's free. We wanna, you know, do what we can to support practitioners and, you know, and put information out there that's useful for us as practitioners. And, and hopefully avoid some of the, you know, craziness that we, that we've had to learn. And avoid some of those, you know, those scars that you get, you know, in these kind of transactions. But, but definitely, please use the chat function for, for any questions, we'll have time at the end of the session. For additional questions too. And also, we will have, you know, some templates and some other things that we can provide to you as needed. So, you know, we, so, so hopefully we'll, we'll not only give you the presentation, but also some parting gifts if you're looking for any other tools and templates that we can help you with from that perspective. We want to thank, first of all, the, the Rocky Mountain Total Rewards Association. That are coordinating this and sending and putting this in, in place for us. So we're very, very happy, you know, to help. And also, you know, want to also thank World of Work and World of Work is, you know, has also done a lot of work to get the, you know, get these sessions up and running and, and publicize. So, so again, you know, thanks, thanks to those individuals, you know, and, you know, we are, we are not paid sponsors. We are, we are, this is, we're basically doing this for the, for the sense of our, our community. So, all right, well, let me start up the presentation here and share my screen. Alrighty, so never fails when you want to share your screen. You cannot see what you're looking for here. All right, hold on. All right, hopefully, I'll be ready to share the screen, there we go. So, you know, if you guys can see, can see that, please let me know, just give me a, you know, thumbs up or an okay.
Broadcasting now, Ray, I can see it.
Fantastic, all right, great. All right, we'll get, we'll do the full screen here. So, so again, you know, our goal today is to talk a little bit about, you know, in acquisition. So as a company, you know, acquiring somebody else from a buy perspective. And we're looking forward to talking to you guys about, about this. A couple of things, here's what we'll talk about today, you know, why these kinds of transactions happen. Kind of what's the process to buy and acquire? We'll talk a little bit about some of those key risks that you see in transactions. We'll also, you know, give you some, you know, you know, what we think are some of the top three things to focus on during a transaction and at the end to be aware of. And then, well, you know, next steps, just, you know, websites and other things that you can look at, you know, to learn more about this topic. So that's our goal for today. David, did I miss anything? I think we got it covered?
No, I think that's, that's it, Ray, and maybe one of the things people could do is just drop in the chat feature. How comfortable you are with transactions right now, what level of experience do you have? Have you worked on several, are you planning your first project? What, where are you with the, with the M&amp;A experience at this point? And that'll help us as we go through our presentation.
Great, great. All right. So, you know, why do these kind of transactions happen? You know, it's, it's all about the money in, in, in M&amp;A, as everybody knows. But, you know, generally, you know, organizations grow either, you know, internally, you know, through, you know, development, internal development, internal product releases, et cetera. Or they choose to also grow through acquisitions. You know, and in, in those acquisitions happen for lots of different reasons. Either, you know, it's because of competition, their competitor has, you know, decided to roll out a new product and guess what? We've got to match it or beat it. You know, our stock price has been depressed and has not grown. So a way to try to grow our stock price or for our shareholders is by, by finding other complementary businesses to add to the portfolio. You know, also, it could be a strategic direction, I mean, very many, lots of firms use acquisitions as a strategy. It's, you know, we are going to look at our portfolio of products. We're gonna find gaps in our, in our offering and we're gonna find organizations that can help fill those gaps. You know, and I'm working on, on one of those kind of transactions, you know, today. Where the organization has found a strategic buy that, that fills a, a gap in their product offering. And that's the, the organization they're going after. Also, it could be a talent play. And by that, I mean, you know, if you're in the technology space, you know, it is expensive to add people and to find talent. And guess what? You know, if you can go and buy an organization, you know, for, you know, you know, for, for $20 million that has, you know, 30 or 40 developers. Talk about a great deal to get talent and to bring talent into the organization. So, you know, so those are all different reasons why these kind of transactions happen. Each organization is, is different right now. You know, the big one that's happening right now also is private equity firms. Private equity firms have lots of cash. And I spent, you know, I spoke with one firm last week who just increased their, their cash flow by $10 billion. That's with a B, 10 with a B, to go and get and do more acquisitions. They've already got 40 plus companies in their portfolio, now they've got $10 billion to go and add to that. So, you know, so these things are gonna be happening in the market. And, you know, and I think the other, the other big thing that's happening in the market is the, I think they're, it's SPACs, I think they're called. And they're basically, you know, you know, investors who have collected tons of, of cash. And basically, they can go out and purchase companies, but they're not in a, a specific sector. They basically have free rein to go invest those dollars, whether it's technology or consumer products or pharmaceuticals or whatever that may be. So, really, really, you know, you know, interesting, some of these firms that are coming up with, again, lots of money to invest in these kinds of acquisitions. David, anything you want to say about, about that?
Ray, just to add, I think that as we think about those different types of acquisitions in the media, we can see examples very frequently. Whether it's a combination of banks to reduce competition, Disney, obviously, we've seen over the years, has made some interesting acquisitions to expand their, their talent. And so I think we see those things, if you're interested in finding more about the business drivers and how to think about these things. Because that really ultimately is gonna help you as you think about due diligence and as you think about integration of these target companies, understanding the business needs. McKinsey is a very nice model about the six types of successful acquisitions that you can go out and, and take a look at.
Great, great, thanks. Yeah, a great example of some of these kind of transactions is Apple purchasing Beats headphones. Again, a very different market, they went out and wanted to expand into that market by purchasing, you know, that organization. You know, and I think you talked about Disney acquiring, you know, Marvel and, and the Star Wars franchises. So that they can enhance their, their online streaming service to have more content. So lots of different reasons why these kind of transactions happen.
And, and one of the, Ray, there was a question also about the impact of COVID-19 in the transaction space. And, you know, that has, transactions have been going through, they probably have slowed down a bit as a result of that. But it likely will also lead to a new surge of consolidation from companies that have been impacted by the coronavirus and by changes that have gone on in their markets. And so we, we think that as well as the pandemic still continues, we think the impact of it is gonna continue in the M&amp;A market for a while as well.
Yeah, that's a great point on, on COVID and the impact. Initially, a lot of folks felt that it was gonna slow down transactions. But as everything, we, we evolve, you know, buyers have evolved. They're figuring out different ways to value organizations based on the downturn. You know, and that's really also made, you know, purchase prices much more reasonable than before. So that's one. And, and also, you know, because of, you know, even, you know, adjustments are being made by buyers and they're figuring out ways to get diligence completed, you know, in a timely fashion. To do a better job of, of integration planning, you know, and to do, you know, things like online or online onboarding and online day one experiences for, for employees. So lots of different things are happening, but, but organizations are adjusting, you know, to the environment that we're in. You know, and it's, it's gonna, you know, we're gonna be in this environment for a while and, you know, and acquisitions will continue, you know, even in the environment. That's a good, great point. Alrighty, the process to buy or acquire a company, you know, this is kind of the, the, you know, the consultant Chevron, that we, we love Chevrons as consultants. But I mean, really, we break up a, the process of a, of a transaction really into these five stages. You know, IDing the target, you know, what, what exactly are you looking for? And, and, and a lot of times bankers are helping and marketing firms that are, that are ready to be sold. You know, due diligence is really where you're really trying to figure out kind of what's, you know, what's underneath the covers and understand, you know, the organization, the liabilities. You know, and what you're really trying to identify in diligence is, is there something so bad in diligence that you're gonna have to adjust the purchase price? That's a big one, you know, what, how, you know, how big are those lawsuits? You know, how real are those revenues? You know, how, how, how real are those day sales outstanding? You know, things of that nature, you know, you know, do they really have, you know, 100 productive developers? You know, or do they really only have, you know, 50 and, you know, and 50 contractors? You know, so those are the things that, that you're looking for in diligence. And many times, the organizations aren't very, very open. You know, they're, they, they try to keep, keep things under wraps until after the deal is done. Integration planning, so here's really where you really understand, you know, what's happening with terms and conditions? Do you have to change those? How do you harmonize benefits and policies? You know, are you gonna integrate employees or keep it as a separate business unit? You know, and then, you know, the day one experience, you gotta be prepared to answer kind of the what's in it for me from employees? What's the strategy of the deal and why is this being done? You know, and putting in a good 90-day integration plan for those employees. Onboarding, communications, compliance, lots of, the, the ultimate goal is to transition employees into your organization as smoothly as possible. So they can become and continue to be productive and not lose momentum in their sales, not lose momentum in how, in their development of new products or rolling out of new products. So that's really important. Some of the significant things that happened there on, across the top are things like the signing of the deal. You know, usually that will happen after diligence. When you announce the transaction, this will depend on whether it's a publicly traded company or a privately traded company. And then when you, when you actually close the deal. You know, so those arrows can move around, okay? So, you know, I've seen announce and close being the same day. You know, because of government response, you know, reporting responsibilities, I've seen announce and close go 90 to 120 days or longer. So, you know, a lot of it just depends on the transaction. So being flexible and, and, and prepared to adjust is very, very important. And then below, we've just identified some of these key documents that you need to be prepared, you know, to look at or produce. You know, stopper, stock purchase agreements or, or any purchase agreements. You know, the employee matters section is where the HR, all the HR or the majority of the HR information will be housed in that agreement. You know, executive contracts, you gotta negotiate those executive contracts and get them to somewhat of a normal, normal based on your current organization. You're not gonna be bringing in, you know, acquired employees at significantly higher dollars than what you're paying your current employees. That'll cause problems on the other side. You know, so all of those things are important. You know, due diligence report, you need to report exactly what you found. And then also, not only what you found, but how you take that and build it into the integration plan to find what I would call an elegant solution. You know, to some of those, you know, messes that you found in integration or in diligence. Make sure you have a budget for integration, you know, your communication strategy, benefits, side-by-sides are important. You know, and then again, you know, you may need to, you know, to generate new offer letters for all employees, which can be a real challenge. Trying to get out hundreds of offer letters correctly, you know, is a logistical challenge. Sometimes, some people would call it a nightmare, you know, and, and, and making sure that they're correct. So again, lot of moving parts in, in the process that you go through in this. Some of the reasons why it is so important to document and keep track of this is, I had a transaction where we budgeted, you know, $10 million for retention stock options. Built it into the, into the budget, presented it to the board of directors. The, you know, then we, of course, were putting together the recommendations for the executives of the holding company to approve. The executive came back and goes, Ray, we don't have budget for this. I'm like, well, yes, we do. And his comment was, no, we don't, I, I set the budget, I said, well, we, we built it into our budget, integration budget. We, we built it and we presented it to the board of directors. So we do. And his comment was, those people are paid too much money, I don't wanna, I don't wanna give them any more stock. So, you know, an example of where you've got documentation, it's important because there could be challenges after the deal's done. So documenting and keeping good tabs of that is so, so important. In that example, I ended up getting some money to do those grants. It took a lot of work, but, you know, didn't get the full 10 million, but I got, I got a good chunk of that. So there was, there was a successful outcome. David, anything on the process?
No, I, Ray, I think it's a great high-level overview and it's, but understanding that each transaction is gonna have its own differences, its own nuances. And the specifics within each of these steps can change and sometimes change very significantly depending on the nature of the deal. So it's a great, a great introduction and, you know, think about it, but be flexible in, in your approach.
All right, David, you're on.
Great, thanks, Ray. In the next section, we'll talk about some of the key risks to transaction success. And one of the things that I think that we can speak to is stumbling blocks, items that have come up in various transactions that we've worked on. And how you might be able to avoid them. One of the, one of the first things, just in terms of, of level setting also is understanding when we talk about a transaction success and why they might not meet their goals. We might have financial reasons, we might miss a revenue target, we might have higher expense because we didn't meet synergy targets. We might have unexpected attrition, delayed product launch, all sorts of reasons why a transaction might not meet their goals, might not be as successful as we anticipated. But it doesn't necessarily mean the transaction failed. And one of the things that, as we think about those risks and how to anticipate them, one of the things we want to think about is our integration strategy. And thinking about whether we intend to absorb the target company, whether we are gonna try to combine the target company and create a best of both worlds. Whether we're gonna try to use this to create something transformative with a new organization. Having an idea of that in advance will help us as we go through the due diligence process, the integration planning process. To think about what ultimately we're trying to to outcome. And, and one other step that I think is important in this, if you can, think about what your organization's non-negotiables are. Is there anything within your organization that is just not negotiable? And therefore you would be ready to walk away from a deal. And, and thinking about that upfront can be important because you may come across things in due diligence that will make you want to walk away. And if you, if you have that context, if you have that organizational understanding, it'll make it much easier for you and the leadership team to, to not pursue a transaction. Ray, if you could go to due diligence, our first step?
Yep.
Great. So the, the first way we mitigate risk in a transaction is through our due diligence process. This is a key step, researching the target, identifying risks, both financial and otherwise, that may impact the deal value and may ultimately cause you not to pursue a transaction. When we talk about financial risks, we can think about things like unfunded liabilities in a benefit plan or pension plan. Think about compensation guarantees, severance guarantees, things that might create a financial obligation to a buyer that changes the nature of the transaction. There may also be operating risks and maybe issues with employee relations, with governance, with behavior, frankly, of, of some of the individuals. We'll want to understand that. And when we complete the due diligence process, we'll want to have a due diligence report that identifies these issues and, and plans them. One of the first steps and one of the most important things you can do, try to do as an HR professional is to be invited to the management presentation. This is an opportunity where the management team of the selling firm essentially puts on their best face. Gives an overview of their business, of their organization and tries to show potential buyers what the value of that of that business is and how that can be successful. So taking the opportunity to get to see that transaction, it gives you an important visibility into that management team, quite frankly. This gives you a chance to observe them, to look at how they interact with each other. Ideally, you will have done some public record due diligence of them, you'll understand their backgrounds. How long they've been in their roles, what their previous experience was. But this really gives you a chance to see how they interact with one another. Yeah, in the due diligence part, go ahead, Ray.
Yeah, and, and on this one, I think, David, you know, the, the other thing that's important around, you know, collecting information. There's a lot of public information out there that you can look at as a practitioner to understand the organization that's, that you're targeting. You know, you can get a LinkedIn, you know, LinkedIn recruiter's license from one of your recruiters and figure out kind of where these, the, the key leaders have worked together before. You know, and, and get a, a sense of, you know, their ties, you know, and you can quick, you know, we, I've been able to find out, you know, that four or five individuals have done these kind of transactions multiple times. And guess what, they don't stay longer than six months. So, you know, if you're gonna do the deal, it's important to understand that and to figure out how to capture that, that knowledge, you know, in six months. Cause, you know, the chance that they're, they're gonna be around at seven months is probably not gonna be there. So, you know, use publicly, publicly available information to, to help you as you not only do your diligence, but also your, your integration planning.
Right, and, and one of the tools that you'll become familiar with ideally is a data room. And for the most part today, these are virtual data rooms. It's a, an online repository of information that the seller uploads documents to and as prospective buyer, you have access to review. Important in that is giving that seller a checklist, give them a due diligence checklist, what information you want to see. What do you look for? Where you'll, you're, where you'll be able to find it. And sometimes the HR-related information is not in the HR section of the data room. At times, you'll be looking in the finance section, at times in the legal section. There may be contracts in an operations section. So it's important to understand what it is you're looking for and look throughout the data room from time to time. There are certain things, particularly contracts and legal settlements and active legal cases that you may see appear in the legal section, not in the HR section. And again, ultimately, as you're doing this, you're looking for liabilities, you look for executive contracts, agreements for future payments, potential litigation. Compliance and benefits program. So if you don't see information in the data room, ask for it. Request a meeting with the target if things are unclear. This also gives a good opportunity to meet with the leadership team of a target company. And again, back to the integration strategy, if you plan on trying to retain that leadership team, it's important to, to get some time. To get some time with them and start to understand their motivations, as Ray was saying. And what is shared with the target management team, depending on where you are in the process, there may be certain information. That you are not able to share with them. And even if you're looking to bring them into your organization, you need to understand where in the transaction you are. In terms of sharing confidential, non-public information, information critical to business strategies.
Yeah, that's, that's a big part because this is still a negotiation. And if you by mistake divulge the organization's approach, your organization's approach on. You know, issuing stock or issuing retention programs or any of those things. That will be used as a given and they'll, and they're going to want to negotiate that plus more. So it's always a negotiation of that plus more. Just remember that. You know, that there's still two sides working the transaction. So just be really careful on what you disclose.
And finally, as we spoke about previously, particularly in this environment with the impact of COVID. We should expect everything to take longer during the due diligence process. We should expect it to take longer for data rooms to be populated, for discussions to be scheduled, for. Agreements to be negotiated and signed. Unfortunately, even in, even pre-COVID. Transactions generally took longer than we expected they would and we scheduled them to. But certainly now we should expect everything to take even longer.
Yeah, that's a great point. So a couple of things here on diligence, you know, you know, make sure that you are very persistent in what you're looking for. Many times organizations will delay and delay because they don't want to provide you any data because it's bad data. It's going to cause problems. So, you know, so I've been in a situation where. We knew of a, of a lawsuit that was settled, but the organization would not provide us the details. Until about a week before diligence was supposed to be completed. You know, and it got to be days before diligence was supposed to be completed. We finally said, look, if we can't get this information, we're not going to move forward with approving the transaction. They provided us the information. It was a sexual harassment lawsuit that was settled. The employee was fired and then, and then they settled. The, the perpetrator just happened to be one of the key leaders of the organization. That was identified as a keeper. And when we looked at the details, it was just a very poorly done investigation. The person should have been terminated. And my challenge was my exec, my sponsoring executive did not want to do anything to that individual. He wanted him to come over. And, you know, and I had to have, you know. Five and five to six different heated conversations on why this individual shouldn't join our firm. At the end, when I basically said, look, you know, how would you feel if, you know. If, if in the, the day after close, this was disclosed in the morning business page that we acquired a company. And we acquired somebody who had been accused of and, you know, admitted to sexually harassing employees. Would you feel comfortable, you know, defending that? And that's when he said, you know, I think we should not bring him over. I, it'll be my decision that terminate, that they need to terminate him before we do the acquisition. So I said, that's a great, great recommendation. So, you know, so those are the things you have to be aware of. And, and they're very difficult discussions, you know. Sometimes very colorful conversations. So you gotta be prepared for those things.
That's right. And, and some of the, some of the surprises you'll see are. This is, this is a place where you should never be surprised. Always expect a surprise. Ray, we can go to the next slide.
All right. All right. Well, let's see here. There you go.
Great. Thank you. So total rewards, as, as Ray mentioned at the beginning of the call. Alvarez and Marcel are going to be having two separate sessions, speaking specifically about total rewards in the context of M and A. So we won't go into a lot of detail here, but we did want to talk about it because this really is a critical element in the transaction. First of all, integrating two organizations, benefits harmonization is ultimately very important. Compensation, pay harmonization. How do you, how do you bring those two together? But typically also total rewards, whether it's compensation, health and welfare benefits, retirement plan, other things. Are a significant cost driver in an organization. So understanding the financial impact that total rewards has is very important. When you think about the integration of these two organizations, completing a side-by-side analysis. Is absolutely critical to understand the net change to employees. There will almost always be. Some gain and some loss, perceived loss at least to an employee population. Generally, that can be in the, in the form of change, right? That people are reluctant to change, they're unsure, and they perceive the new plan as, as a loss. So understanding what the health and welfare benefits are, what the level of coverage is, what the employee costs, the employer costs. Deductibles, all those issues, very important in your side-by-side. Finally, you know, how do, how do different companies pay? Some companies are lower salary structure, higher incentive model. Some are the opposite. Understanding where your potential target is relative to your organization. And planning for that can be very important in understanding. Not only how the employees will feel about being integrated into your organization. But also how that might impact the cost in your organization. Incentive plans, whether it's sales incentive, executive incentive, other things like that, very similar. And finally, new terms and conditions, understanding what type of a transaction you're going through. Whether it's a stock transaction where you're acquiring all of the stock of the company. And therefore those employees will transfer over and can retain their current terms and conditions. Or an asset purchase where you're asking those employees to go through and offer an accept process. It's very important to understand what those terms are and how you're going to approach those sorts of things.
Yeah, really important here, yeah. In total rewards, the really important part is. You know, you may have a, a desire to not deal with this and kick, kick the can down the street, down the street till after, after a close. But all you're really doing is causing even bigger problems. If you, if you basically bring somebody in and their, their salespeople have better commission plans than your people do. You know, you're going to cause problems. You know, if their bonus structure is more aggressive and higher, even though their base may be lower, you're going to have problems. You know, so the sooner you, you can harmonize and get to, you know, some consistency. The better it will be for the organization going forward. You know, and, and, and there's always in all of our. Of the, of the, you know, the stock purchase agreements or asset purchase, purchase agreements. Under, under compensation and benefits, it'll say in aggregate. Pay and benefits will be similar. Well, you, whether it says that and whether you feel like in aggregate they're, they're the same. You really need to take a look at individual plans by individual plans and make adjustments. You know, if somebody's pay isn't changing, but they're going to have to pay out an additional $300. A, a month for medical and, and dental and vision for their plan. That's a net loss of, of spendable cash. So you need to figure out a way to, to help those employees. Because if you don't, they're, they're going to be complaining about that for the next 24 months in all of your. Employee opinion surveys and how they were mistreated. So, you know, make sure you think about those things and, and make adjustments where needed. To treat employees and that employee experience as good as you can. Because that'll make the integration much, much better for the employees. All right, David.
And that, and that, you know, that employee experience piece. Is so important. Communicating to employees, target company, communicating to your own employees. Even when the answer is, I don't have an answer. Understanding that they're going through significant disruption. That there's concern about benefits coverage, that people may have pre-existing conditions, less of a concern now. Thanks to the Affordable Care Act. But there, there are important issues and frequently when people don't have answers. They assume the worst case and the rumor mill starts. And it's incredible how often you'll find in a transaction. You know, when. Treatments are scheduled, when treatments are, and how easy it is to have employees upset by misinformation or lack of information. And how disruptive that can be to successfully integrating a business and how that can lead to turnover, attrition. And, and not being as successful as you want to be.
Yep, that's a great point. You know, the other thing here in, in total rewards is. Be prepared for, on the government, governance side. You know, it never fails, you know, the, the, the target company will say, all of our employees are great. They're happy. Nobody is going to leave. And just as soon as you, you know, sign the contract, you know, Joe, your top developer decides to bail, you know, to jump ship. So, you know, so what are you going to do about Joe? Well, the target could care less about Joe because they're, you know, they're getting the deal done. Now Joe becomes your problem and, and how you, who approves the counter offer? Who approves new stock or retention? You know, make sure you look at those things early versus trying to be reactive. Because then, you know, being reactive, you know, causes even more problems and, and mixed messages to, to Joe. Who probably won't come back. So, you know, just, you know, be aware of, of, of those kinds of things that, that will happen in a transaction. You know, even though they say everybody is, is good, good and safe, safely in the saddle, they're not. So. All right.
And Ray, I think that's a good transition over to retention strategy and talent acquisition.
Sounds good. All right. If you can take a look and see if there's any, any questions in the chat or anything, that'll be great, David. So just real quickly on, on, on talent acquisition and retention strategy. You know, you're doing the transaction. It may take two months, three months, four months. But guess what? You still have to hire people. You've got to make sure people are, don't leave the organization and that, that critical talent stays with you. You know, and in the picture that we're showing here, you know, you know, you tell me. The, the top 10% out of that, that group of people. You know, and, and having a, an approach for selection of that top 10%, you want to spend additional dollars on. Is really, really important. You know, so, you know, from, as soon as you announce the transaction or it gets out. You know, the, the target organization is going to be. You know, the phone calls will quickly start coming in from the recruiters. And the recruiters will, will view, view your target as a, an organization with folks that are, that are ready to leave. That aren't going to be happy with, with sticking around. So that's why we talked about earlier, the communication and being answer, being able to answer those kind of what's in it for me questions is huge. Employees need to know and, and telling them to wait until after close is not a good solution. They'll be taking more of those recruiter calls. You know, your, your talent acquisition team at the target is still going to have to hire, you know. Developers and product marketing people and salespeople. You know, so even, even while the transaction is going on. So you've got to get decisions made around what are the titles going to be? What packages are going to be, are you going to be approving to get offered? Whose paper is the offer going to be written under? The target or you as the acquirer? You know, so you have to get prepared to answer and, and all of those questions. And some of that will depend on when that person's starting. If they're starting after the deal is closed, clearly it's, it's, you know, the paper of, of yourself. If the deal is before, you know, do you want to, you know, do you want to make the offers under, you know, the, the target's paper? So those are things you have to think about. From a retention perspective, you know, it's really going to be important that, you know, that employees are going to be sticking around through close. And then that they're going to stick around after close because, you know. The reality is, you know, in, in today's environment, the majority of the value in an organization is the people. And the intellectual property that they have and the knowledge that they have and the contacts with customers. So, so you've got to think about ways to retain that talent. If you've spent hundreds of millions of dollars to purchase this company, you want to make sure that that talent sticks around. The leadership sticks around. So the next slide, we'll, we'll walk you through an example of a retention strategy for a transaction. But really important, you know, that, that you identify. There's diff, there's always going to be different buckets. And, you know, and, and look at different ways to assess who belongs in those different buckets for retention. You know, you know, don't be surprised if you say, I want, you know, give me your, your, your 20, your 20 most critical talent. And, you know, the folks that are critical to the success of the transaction in a small deal. And the list you get is everybody with a VP title. Well, you know what? You know, the, the person with the VP title is not developing product and they don't know the code. They're not the ones with the customer, you know, contract, contacts and, and, and relationships. You know, so really look at, at what those, what you're being given by the target organization. And vet that in different ways. That's really, really important. Now, you're also going to need people through the trend, the transition. You know, if you're purchasing an organization, acquiring an organization, and you already have robust IT, HR, finance, marketing. You may not need that, those G and A functions. So you probably need those G and A functions to stick around through close, maybe 30 days post-close. And then exit them from the organization, but you have to incent them to stick around. Okay, until you get integrated. So, you know, think about who you retain, you know, in different ways. Hold on here, I got. Let's see here, need to admit a couple of people to the call. Late arrivals. Okay. Here is an example of a retention strategy. Again, you know, in this example, we've broken it up into, gosh, six different types of employees. And this actually is a, a retention, you know, strategy that we used on a transaction I worked on. Technology company in the Bay Area. And this was, you know, really intended for, for an acquisition. And it was going to be a separate standalone entity and they ended up, you know, integrating the company into the, the, the entity fully. So, but. So, but, you know, there's different ways to do this. In this example, we look at key leaders. We look at the sales team, sales technology teams, which are the, generally your, your professional services folks. Engineering and technical staff, individual contributors that are not technical staff, and then transition employees. You know, and here we use an example, you know, here's their target total cash compensation. And then under retention percentage, how we break up the retention. So in the first example, we wait, basically wanna do a $400,000 retention for this individual. We wanna break that up in cash and equity, where we put $100,000 in cash and $300,000 in equity. And then the vesting of not only the cash, but also the equity. You know, for the sales team, we wanna keep their quota and pay them at 100% during the transition to make sure that they, you know, they're still receiving their pay. And then after six months, they go on to the, the new plan. Okay? Same thing with the sales technology team. You know, we wanna keep them at 100% of quota for six months. If they actually exceed that, they'll get the higher amount. But at a minimum, they're guaranteed those kinds of bonus, those kinds of commissions over the first six months. Engineering, we use 40%. We basically did all cash versus equity. And then the transition employee, you know, this is somebody making a hundred thousand dollars a year. This could be, you know, a finance manager. This could be an HR business partner. You know, this could be an IT manager. And we need them through, you know, for six months. So we basically wanna put, you know, $25,000 out there. And at the end of six months, they get the 25K plus they get the severance. So it, it's a big enough chunk of money that it's gonna be really tough for another company to, to match that. If you do a $5,000 transition bonus for somebody, you know, any offer will include a $5,000 signing bonus. So, you know, just be aware of that, you know, just look at, look at the dollars. And then make sure you bake this into your integration budget. David, any thoughts here?
No, Ray, the only other thing is, is to feel free to think about other non-financial elements as well. For example, new roles, more challenging roles, opportunity to work on different products, to move to different geographic areas. Including all of those things as part of a retention strategy for certain key individuals who may not be as interested in the money or, or interested by things in addition to the money. So, different ways to approach that.
Yeah, that, that's a great one and, and I'll, I'll give you an example of a transaction that I worked on. This was an organization that had 40 total employees and 30 of the employees were software developers in Boulder, Colorado. So the epicenter of, of startups, you know, one of the epicenters of startups except for the, the Bay Area. And the company that we acquired was running out of cash. And they basically needed us to take them over and they had about three weeks of cash for payroll. So we had to get the deal done in three weeks. And oh, by the way, a block away from where they were headquartered, Twitter was putting up a brand new campus. Four stories took up half of city block on Pearl Street, which is like, you know, the, the cool part of Boulder. Boulder's all cool, but, you know, but this is like, you know, the, the place to work. So employees from other organizations could literally walk over to Twitter at lunch and have a job offer as they had their, their, their sandwich with the, with the, with the Twitter recruiter. So, so talk about competition. You know, if we didn't do this right, you know, those employees, those 30 developers would become Twitter developers in no time. So we had to get our deal done very quickly. Get a lot of exceptions approved by our benefits team to, to onboard people quickly. We actually put in additional cash retention at three, payable at three and six months after the deal closed, closed, so that we could, you know, make sure people stuck around. You know, so those are the examples of what's happening in the marketplace for, for, for high, high quality talent. So you've gotta come up with creative ways to, you know, to incent people to stay. And you also have to be, you know, very in tune as to what's happening in your market around, you know, as close as around the corner. So, you know, that's really, really important. David, anything to add?
No, that's great.
All right, good. On culture, you know, one of the things are about transactions that are really, really important is that there is a culture fit. You know, and, and culture is really tough to define for an organization. And especially now, you know, you know, culture is being challenged even more because of what's happening with COVID. You know, if the culture in an organization was, you know, collegial, very, you know, very collaborative environment. Guess what? We bring in lunch every day and everybody sits down and has lunch around a big table. So we all know each other well and, and, you know, and, and we're all friends. Well, guess what? That's not happening anymore, you know, you know, in a remote work environment. So, you know, you've gotta find different ways to embrace the culture and reinforce the culture. And there's a lot of things that companies are doing for that. When you acquire another company, you know, it's very important to be very honest with what your culture is. And to identify where there are similarities with the company you're acquiring and where there are gaps. And then use your integration plan to close those gaps. All right, so super important. You know, the, the best example I could give you on this one is we were targeting an organization out of Austin. The, to say that this organization had big egos would be an understatement. The, the founders, the leaders of the organization basically publicized on their website, in articles, in, you know, basically that they were the smartest people ever in Austin or in their technology field. You know, their egos were huge, they, they didn't believe anybody else could do things as well as they could. And that kind of permeated through the organization. When we looked at, you know, that organization and their culture and compared it to our culture, that was much more what I would say collaborative, soft spoken. You know, you probably wouldn't get into, get, be able to get into the know with the key leaders for at least 18 to 24 months. You know, talk about a clash of cultures. Based on the information that we were able to collect and present to the business leaders and the, and the business development team, we quickly decided this was not gonna be a fit. And we just walked away from the transaction without even signing a letter of intent. So that information's out there. If you're doing a transaction, you know, look at the website, look at articles, look at, you know, LinkedIn profiles. You know, there's a lot of places right now, public places to get information that you can really understand what the culture of an organization looks like. Also, you know, collect information from your target. Look at, you know, what's their workspace look like? What, have they done surveys? What does Glass Door say about them? You know, you know, find out how they get work done, how they collaborate. You know, the big one is what gets rewarded? Does, does good work and producing product get rewarded? Or does, you know, going out to happy hour with the, with the, with the founders get rewarded? So really try to identify that because that culture is important. And then compare that to your culture and, and just do a comparison. You know, you know, there are lots of tools out there. If you're doing a big transaction and you've got, you know, 50 or a hundred thousand dollars to, to burn, there are cultural assessments available that'll, that'll do this for you. But you could, you know, if you don't have the budget, you could do it, you know, quick, you can get it done effectively. You know, and, and really validate the data based on some of these key questions that we have here. So culture is really important in these transactions. But you also, I think, have to be very, you know, I'd, I'd say intellectually honest with what, what's the culture in your organization? How do people get treated? You know, who gets rewarded and why? You know, and, and really, you know, note that and note those, those differences. That's really, really important. David, any thoughts on the culture piece?
I think, you know, Ray, as we talk about culture, you know, especially in today's environment, you know, one of the other elements is around diversity and inclusion in a corporate culture and how that manifests itself. I've been involved with transactions where target companies have been frankly, very proud and rightly proud about the diversity in their senior leadership team, about their approach to diversity and have been very concerned with the, that the target company which didn't have the same track record would really disrupt their culture and, and change them in a way that they were not comfortable with. So that, that sort of thing is very important these days to think about. Culture can also manifest itself as we think about things like risk tolerance. As we think about centralized or decentralized decision-making. And again, how you plan to integrate a business. If you have a very centralized decision-making process and you're acquiring a company with a very decentralized process, be prepared that people are going to make decisions that in your organization, they would be expected to pass up the chain. So approaching some of those issues around culture can also be simple things like titles. How important are titles to, to an organization? How important are offices? Can you walk around a floor and know based on office size what level people are? Sometimes in larger organizations you can and, and that makes a difference. So a lot of different ways that we can observe through observation, pick up information about the culture and again, put it into that analysis. So.
Great point, great point. So again, the, the last thing is really here on integrations. You know, really your goal here is to have a smooth transition for those employees, you know, a smooth landing coming into your organization. You know, you, you wanna make sure that, you know, you, you kind of identify, you know, if you're gonna be making job offers, you do that in a set period of time. You, you do the onboarding, you know, online before. You try to make it as easy as possible and communicate, 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 because that is so important in this. You know, and then once you close, then you really wanna focus on, you know, if there's any training or compliance folks have to go through, you know, make sure that you schedule that. You know, you, you know, you wanna make sure you're answering employees' questions quickly. You know, we recommend, you know, putting a, you know, putting up a microsite. So all of the information that you are, you know, you're, you're, you're presenting to employees, you put those presentations on the microsite. You put together the FAQ on the microsite so folks can go in, get what they need when they need it. You know, and also a place to ask questions, you know, and escalate any issues. You know, so you wanna make that communication as clear and as easy as possible. You know, the other thing we're, we're trying to do, you know, we're, I'm actually, you know, working with somebody right now to do FAQs via a chatbot. You know, so not only do you have an FAQ there, but you've also got a chatbot so that these acquired employees can go in, ask questions, get in, get answers real time based on, on, on those, those FAQs that you've developed. So, you know, use technology as much as possible around this. You know, the other thing we've also done is do micro learning. So, you know, you know, if there's information that, that folks wanna, that need, you know, on, you know, on policies or executive communication, whatever, you know, little spurts of data in micro learning sites where, where it's just in time available for folks, that, those are things that you really need to do from an integration perspective. We talked about making sure you have a strategy and a plan. You know, and then the other thing is, you know, can you really cut everybody over to your systems on day one? What's required by law, what's not required by law? You may have, you know, benefit plans, stock purchase plans, other things that are, that are basically, you know, defined programs that everybody that joins the organization needs to be part of that within a certain number of days. So, you know, that may be required that you integrate immediately, other things you can wait. You know, if those employees are not ready to come over, you need to be prepared with, with technical service agreements or transition service agreements. And basically, you know, that really is where, you know, you're, you know, and these are more, you know, for the company that is, that is being, that is selling this, this firm to you or this company to you, you know, they may need to stay on their prop, you know, benefits, systems, et cetera for a certain amount of time. So just, you know, be prepared with TSAs if needed, if you're not able to assume them at once. All right. We've got a few, you know, kind of in, in closing, you know, these are, you know, you know, we're hoping that you remember what we've, what we're told, what we've talked to you about and what we've, what we've said. But a couple of just big, you know, things you need to be aware of. You know, one is governance, you need to really, you know, we, we as, as practitioners need to have real clear governance on, you know, who approves what? Who can make decisions and make sure that you document those? You know, we're big proponents of documenting at the end of a transaction. Here's the closeout of the transaction. Here's what we did, here's why we did it, here's who approved it. Because it never fails in, in three or six months, you'll have a Monday morning quarterback show up and go, why in the hell did you decide to do that? It's great to be able to go back to the closed document and say, here's what we did, here's the issue, here's why we made this decision, here's who approved it. If you wanna talk to who approved it and you wanna bring the issue up again and open it up, we can. But, you know, we, we, we basically have it covered. That's really, really important. David, you wanna talk about communication?
Absolutely, and, and ultimately, I, I think the message here is you cannot over-communicate. A, a communication to all of the impacted employees, to all of the stakeholders in a transaction is, is very critical. That can be employees, it can be customers, it can be regulators, it can be the local community. But communicating, being clear on what the message is, using multiple cha-channels to communicate, all incredibly important. Fundamentally, making sure that communication is aligned, that customers are getting the same messages that employees are getting because they will share them. And if there is inconsistency, they will find it. So incredibly important to make sure that you're communicating. And again, as a recommendation, telling people that you don't have an answer yet, but you're working on it is still an important piece of communication. Much more important than ignoring the question or pretending the question isn't out there. But, you know, make sure that you are over, when you feel you're over-communicating, you're probably just about right.
Yep, that's a great point. And the other, the last thing here is, you know, plan for a moving target. Plan for. TSAs. You know, if everybody says, oh, yes, we can, systems wise, we can load everybody, you know, before day one. You know, we can put everybody on payroll, we put everybody on benefits. Guess what? You know, a week before, somebody will throw up a red a red flag and saying, sorry, we can't do it. And then you're going to scramble to do TSA. So, you know, be prepared with TSAs. Just when you think you've got your project plan lined up, you've got your dates lined up. You know, something will happen and the arrow will not go straight. It'll, you know, there'll be, there'll be a change, you've got to adjust. You know, and it could be an internal issue, it could be an external factor, but just prepare, you know, and and be flexible from a from a timing perspective. So really, really important. All right. We want to open it up to Q and A. A couple of things real quickly. Here's our contact info, you know, thrive, thrivehr.com. We've got a great website. Check it out. Any questions that you've got, you know, hit us, you know, just, you know, let us know. That's what we look like. We already, you already know that. We've also got templates that we can share with you, a data room checklist, an example of a TSA agreement, retention strategy, you know, blueprints for HR, side-by-side comparisons. So we've got a lot of things that we can share with you. You know, let us know and we and we, again, are very open to sharing. And so, you know, please let us know. Let me stop sharing here. All right, I think we're stopped sharing. And we want to open it up for questions. So, you know, please, you know. What kind of questions do you have? Anybody hit us on the on the chat, on the chat yet?
Let's see. Thank you, Laura.
So any questions for the folks on the call?
So Bob was asking about TSA, what the TSA stands for. Transition Services Agreement, generally, a contract between the buyer and the seller typically when the target is part of a larger organization. And the seller will continue to provide certain services, whether that's payroll, benefits, technology support, etc. There's a variety of of things that a transition services agreement may may cover.
Great. We also have had a question about, will you be sharing the slide deck? And we will. So for folks that joined the call that that registered, we will send out the slide deck. And we've also recorded, you know, the, you know, the the session. So, you know, you know, we can definitely, we'll provide that to you.